Call the order to workshop meeting, March 7, 2023 at 5:04 PM. Councilmember Laskoviat.
Here.
Councilmember Vlanto.
Here.
Councilmember Stoyel.
Here.
Councilmember Nichols.
Here.
Councilmember Alaric to be.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, communication from the mayor of this group messages. Go communication from the public and petitions.
Number one is a request from Corey Allstrom to use Pramenchenko Stadium and Cook's softball field on Thursday and Friday, August 3rd and 4th, 2023, from 3:00 PM until 10:00 PM, and on Saturday and Sunday, August 6th and 7th, 2023, from 8:00 AM until 10:00 PM for the Second Annual Chadwick Bay Softball Tournament.
Any discussion, council?
No, just out those dates are open, Edward?
Councilwoman Gaskins.
Those dates are open?
They came in with applications from the recreation department.
Okay.
So they are all set with those.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, further? Number two?
Number two, request from Maddie White, on behalf of the Alzheimer's Association Western New York Chapter to the Ulysses Point Grandship, the large pavilion, and the neighborhood site once, and bike path for their annual walk to end Alzheimer's fundraising event on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023. Also requesting permission to set up as early as Thursday, September 21st, 2023, and store tables and chairs from Thursday evening to Saturday morning in the kitchen area.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah. Is that going to be all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Was there a time on there? I didn't see any.
I didn't see any.
I don't see a time. I see a time.
Okay, so normally they they set up, they use it for Saturday all day from, they can have it from dawn until dusk.
Yeah, but the walk, if anybody wants to go there, they wouldn't like it all the time either. Believe me, so. Reach out there.
I understand we have the good.
Right. They've already set up the pavilion, and that's the first thing that I asked them to do when they, when they come in and ask for that. And... They did not put times in.
Can we reach out to them?
Lily is really good about putting times in if they do, but they did not put any times in for the walk or anything else.
Can we reach out to them?
We can.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
And they don't need any police supervision or anything at all?
So they don't have, and I always ask if they have a, if they're gonna have any kind of bounce house or any kind of food or anything like that, then they would need to have special insurance from those entities. And they, I mean, they did not.
Well, I just wonder, when I asked about if they needed any police, that would be for, if they had crossed streets and everything for safety issues.
Okay, so I can reach out to them and ask, but that wasn't part of their request.
Usually things, the sidewalk and the bike path, they're pretty good. We'll just have somebody in here.
Thank you.
Okay, number three?
Number three is a request from Sheila T. Starkey-Hahn, on behalf of the Dumper Fielding Aurora Club, to conduct their Third Annual Beach Cleanup at Point Rashid as part of the Adopt a Beach Program on Saturday, April 22nd, 2023, from 9:00 AM until 11:00 AM.
Any discussion, council?
Just that they're gonna leave the bags that they do, and our city guys will pick them up the following day or later that day?
Yeah, they'll pick them up on either Sunday or Monday.
That's right.
Okay, four?
Number four, notice and claim from Lori Jafarian Westfield for damages to her car for the base of a street lamp, from the base of a street lamp that was left exposed with no cone to identify the hazard at the Robles to Noco gas station on Fifth Street and Central Avenue on February 14, 2023.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, sir, you know, we did, oh, I apologize.
No, there's always a cone there. What happened to the? Go ahead.
No. We did send it into our insurance, so it is at least being reviewed.
Okay, good. Any other questions or discussions? That, number five?
Number five, loudspeaker permit request from the Northern Chatapo Conservation Club to use live band speakers and radio from May 20 and 2023 through October 1st, 2023, during fundraisers, fishing tournaments, seminars, and music on the deck.
Any discussion, council?
Just the hours that they would be stopping the music.
They go into the H1 district, something like that.
1:00 AM, doing that in the H1 district.
Okay. Number six?
So they did say that they were gonna cut the time until 1:00 AM. Which is normal for the D1 district. Number six, loudspeaker permit request from the Juneteenth Celebration Committee to use loudspeakers, microphones, instruments, band on Saturday and Sunday, June 17th and 18th, 2023, during their annual Juneteenth celebration events for the community.
Any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to number seven, report sustaining committees, boards, and commissions. Councilwoman Laskoviat. Okay. Councilmember Baman. Councilman Stoyel.
Happen here.
Councilwoman Nichols.
Happen here.
And I don't have anything here. Unfinished business?
We have none, sir.
Okay, let's go to three, five, resolution 16.
Number 16, resolution authorizing Adopt a Garden Program.
Any discussion? Hearing none, 17?
Number 17, resolution for water distribution emergency valve repair and replacement.
Any discussion, council?
Mr. Randy, need to explain any of this?
Sure. It's a, you can spend by year, in sixth, you'll see we have water leaking there. We can't stop that. So we need to insert a valve. There's a specialized company that can do that. We placed quite a few valves around Washington Park, and then that one cut loose right at the end of it. So we have one over by Rolfs, and we have one there, and so the two valves will be take care of that. And the other side is still part of the consent order over in Robin Street, where we put some valves in in December but didn't quite finish that. So once this company comes in, I won't have to pay for mobilization twice. And we can get those valves done as well. I took it to take the city attorney around yesterday and showed him the water coming out of one space, and he would agree that this would qualify as an emergency purchase. And plus, it's a professional service. Thanks.
There you go. Mr. Bobson?
Yeah, I just, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Woodbury had an opportunity to explain it because it is a public emergency and, you know, and the council needs to be aware that that then kicks it over for our ability to move without having to go another procedure relative to contracting for the services because of the emergency, so.
So good. Okay, number 10, new business? We have none, new business? Okay, tonight, I have a motion.
Yeah.
Motion for adjournment by Stoyel, second by Nichols. Councilmember Laskoviat.
Hi.
Councilmember Vlanto.
Hi.
Councilmember Stoyel.
Hi.
Councilmember Nichols.
Hi.
Councilmember Alaric to be.
Hi.
We're adjourned.
What's our?
It's called order the regular meeting, March seventh, twenty twenty-three at five thirty P M. Councilmember Luskovia?
Here.
Councilmember Baman.
Here.
Councilmember Stoy.
Here.
Councilmember Nichols.
Here.
Councilmember Alaric D'Amico.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Certification of prior meeting.
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three was presented to the mayor on Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three pursuant to section three point zero three of the Dunkirk City Charter. All items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect and witness whereof I have here to set my hand and the seal of the City of Dunkirk, New York, this seventh day of March, twenty twenty-three.
Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes? I have a motion by Nichols, a seconded by Baman.
Councilmember Luskovia.
Aye.
Councilmember Baman.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alaric D'Amico.
Aye.
Carried. Reading of the privilege of floor regulations.
The privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case that individual shall be limited to three minutes. And to any person appearing, representing a group, who shall be limited to five minutes. When recognized, please stand and state your name and address. The city clerk shall have the duty of maintaining such time limits and the councilman at large may determine in his discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. The councilman at large D'Amico shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made in bad taste, are slanderous, or non-germain to any action taken or contemplated by council. The time limits specified shall be strictly adhered to, except that a speaker may be allowed to complete a statement or thought started before such time has expired.
Thank you. Privilege of the floor is now open if anyone would like to speak.
Where's the woman in the bed?
Okay, going once, twice, three times, the privilege of the floor is now closed. Communication from the mayor, including disapproval messages. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I just have two quick announcements. One is the electric vehicle that we had spoken about the last meeting has arrived. It is here at City Hall. And again, that's a, this was a purchase made with state funding. I'd like to commend our development director, Vince DeJoy, for the work him and his team did putting that grant proposal together. Um, I also would like to announce that the City of Dunkirk was one of only eleven communities across New York State to receive fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars for our farmers market. And again, that's, that was special because again, many communities put proposals in for these funds and the City of Dunkirk was one of only eleven across the state. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, communication from the public and petitions, number one.
Number one, request from Corey Ostrom to use Promitschenko Stadium and Crook Softball Field on Thursday and Friday, August third and fourth, twenty twenty-three, from three P M until ten P M. And on Saturday and Sunday, August sixth and seventh, twenty twenty-three, from eight A M until ten P M for their second annual Chadwick Bay softball tournament.
Any discussion, council? Uh, Councilmember Baman.
I'd like to thank Corey Ostrom and his group that's helping him out. For a tournament that sizes, the second or third year they're going to be doing this, and it's up to thirty-eight teams, not all thirty-eight are going to be played in Dunkirk, but it's the surrounding areas that, that weekend. And that just brings a lot of money and, and people to come to see the city down at the water at Wright Park, so kudos to him, thank you very much. And thirty-eight teams is a lot. We haven't seen a tournament like that here since the early eighties, we didn't have thirties plus teams, so it's gonna be a busy weekend down there. So I encourage everybody to go down there and see the, the girls play in a nice tournament.
Thank you. Yeah, that is nice. Anything else? If not, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approve subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions? I have a motion by Nichols with a seconded by Baman.
Councilmember Luskovia.
Aye.
Councilmember Baman.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alaric D'Amico.
Aye.
Carried.
Number two, request from Maddie White on behalf of the Alzheimer's Association Western New York Chapter to utilize Point Grashit, the large pavilion, and the neighborhood sidewalks and bike path for their annual Walk to End Alzheimer's fundraiser event on Saturday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Also requesting permission to set up as early as Thursday, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, and store tables and chairs from Thursday evening till Saturday morning in the kitchen area.
Any discussion, council? Uh, Councilmember Baman?
Like I brought up in the workshop, if we could find out what time to start time there so people can get there and participate.
Will do, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Maddie need a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approve subject to the appropriate insurances and usual conditions. I have a motion by Stoy, can I have a second by Nichols?
Councilmember Luskovia.
Aye.
Councilmember Baman.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols. Councilmember Alaric D'Amico.
Aye.
Carried.
Number three, request from Sheila T. Starkey-Hahn on behalf of the Dunkirk Fronia Rotary Club to conduct their third annual beach cleanup at Point Grashit as part of the Adopt a Beach Program on Saturday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, from nine A M until eleven A M.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approve subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions? Got a motion by Councilwoman Luskovia, a seconded by Councilmember Baman.
Councilmember Luskovia.
Aye.
Councilmember Baman.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alaric D'Amico.
Aye.
Carried.
Number four, notice of claim from Lori Jafarian of Westfield for damages to her car from the base of a street light that was left exposed with no cone to identify the hazard at the Robles-Tonoco gas station on Fifth Street and Central Avenue on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to the Law Department and the Department of Public Works? I got Nichols with a motion, a seconded by Stoy.
Councilmember Luskovia.
Aye.
Councilmember Baman.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alaric D'Amico.
Aye.
Carried. Number five.
Number five, loudspeaker permit request from the Northern Chautauqua Conservation Club to use live bands, speakers, and radio from May twentieth, twenty twenty-three through October first, twenty twenty-three during fundraisers, fishing tournaments, seminars, and music on the deck.
Any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as prove subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions? I have a motion by Stoy and a seconded by Nichols.
Councilmember Luskovia.
Aye.
Councilmember Baman.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alaric D'Amico.
Aye.
Carried.
Number six, loudspeaker permit request from the Juneteenth Celebration Committee to use loudspeakers, microphones, instruments, bands on Saturday and Sunday, June seventeenth and eighteenth, twenty twenty-three during their annual Juneteenth celebration events for the community.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, I need a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approve subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions. I have a motion by Councilwoman Luskovia and a seconded by Councilmember Baman.
Councilmember Luskovia.
Aye.
Councilmember Baman.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alaric D'Amico.
Aye.
Carried. Reports of standing committees, boards, and commissions, Councilwoman Luskovia?
Yes, um, I have a question for Randy, our D P W director. Hey, Randy, I hear the county has not completed, completed the culvert project on Outer and Ounce area. I wanted to assure the citizens that it hasn't been completed yet, it's a little messy. Also, I know Ounce and Otter is a work in progress. Could you tell us about the recent work and how it, it helped, it will help and what also will be completed this year? And perhaps we could provide relief until then, such as lowering catch basins currently not effective. How about dredging near the roads in order the water has somewhere to go?
Sure. A lot of issues. The Ounce and Otter was identified last year by the mayor and yourself and Public Works as an area that needed to be repaved. Uh, but before you can repave it, you need to fix the drainage or your paving is going to fall apart very rapidly. So we, we've been studying that. Last year, we did a hundred thousand dollars worth of roadwork in each one of the wards. We should be reimbursed by, for that money by next week and then we'll get additional CHIPS money in April so we can proceed. Ounce and Otter is near the top of the mayor and my list to address. The county is helping us with that. Uh, the, the county made, we need, required a topographic map, so the county made us a topographic map around Christmas time, helps us study the entire area. There's several different drainage divides in there, so we're going to address all of those. The, you start with the lowest end of the drainage and that is at the corner of Wright Park, Drive, and Pine Street. And the county's putting in a new culvert there. City crews built the original culvert there when that area was developed by nineteen thirty-six. And this, that was built out of corrugated steel at the time. A hundred years later, it's rested out, it's time for a new one, so it's new corrugated steel. This is hundreds of thousands of dollars of non-city money that's, the county got a grant to do this and they targeted, uh, the, the first ward area of Wright Park and the, the area by, by, by the, by the pickleball courts and things like that for improved drainage. And also drainage, uh, obstructed wetlands over by Main Street and the Boulevard. And they're removing a lot of invasive species, the Japanese knotweed, the Australia, uh, Australia's fragmites is coming out and they're doing, improving the runoff. So that's the lowest part of the drainage where you start. We're going to work uphill from there, we're going to work around the corner of Pine and Ounce Street and improve the drainage there where another corrugated pipe that's at least sixty years old is rusted out, we're going to replace that with plastic and going to make it deeper as you suggested. And we also had that in mind and so we can drain more things, the deeper we put the pipe, the more things we can tie into it. So that will take care of that area, that will allow us to then pave the entire loop around, we, the, the citizens in that area were, it allowed us to make a loop connection at the end of Ounce and Otter around nineteen ninety-four, otherwise our Packers and Snowplows had to back up the entire length of that road. So we'll, we'll repave that one as well, so that's on the schedule. Moving along well. Uh, I know people are impatient about it, but I asked them to retool and be a little bit patient, we can't really do anything until we get our CHIPS money, until the Blacktop Plan opens up and we want to do it right. So it's, it's moving along very well. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the relief and the hope. With no sidewalks there, the streets are used for walking, running, and biking. Please know I'm not blaming the current administration because really it's been decades since it's been prop, needed to be properly addressed. And it's really up to the first ward councilperson to share and let you know of its severity through me and my constituents. And I'm so happy to announce we're going to finally follow through. Thank you, Randy, mayor, and the D P W. That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilman Baman?
Randy, is there going to be any upgrades this year in the second ward for water?
Uh, yes. The, one of the areas we've targeted is, uh, and unfortunately, sometimes your ideas come because of a, of a problem. There was a fire on West Chestnut Street and it brought to our attention, I talked to our great fire chief and, and other people in that area and we, and we noticed that most of the caps on the fire hydrants over in the Point area are black capped, which means the fire department really can't use those. Uh, we have a twelve-inch water line on Route Five. I talked to the owner of the former Moose Club and he said he'd give us an easement to put a fire protection water line along the west side of that parking lot and put, and quite quickly with our own crews, put a good fire hydrant there between that property and the hotel property and also put one at the corner, both corners of Finch and Point Drive West and Finch and, and West Chestnut Street. That would greatly improve the fire protection while also tie in, uh, the water lines and give people a little bit extra pressure in that area as well. So that, we, we want to do that one and we also want to do Patan. And then in the third ward, um, we have a grant, the mayor got about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace lead service lines and our target area is to contract out. Uh, initially, our crews wanted to do that themselves. When we real, when they realized there's other things they can do with a fire hydrant and things like that and with the extra that we have to go all the way to the house, I talked with Mr. Curry and, and Mr. Brishen and they agree we should contract that out. It would be a nice clean contract, want to get that started fairly quickly. It also would eliminate a troublesome four-inch line, it's really old in the middle of Washington Avenue in the six hundred and seven hundred block. So big project in the second ward, yes, another big project in the third ward.
And when does the Blacktop factory open?
Usually about the first of April.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stoy.
Yeah, chief, it's in my imagination or didn't one time, didn't we have a speed limit on these trains coming through the city?
Depends on which rail line it is.
The C S X?
C S X because it's elevated, I believe it's the standard of fifty-five, but the Amtrak can go faster than that. Fourth Ward is set differently because there's grade crossings in a residential area.
There is a slower speed. But I'm just, you know, with all this attention on, on train wrecks. Okay, Randy, a couple of people approached me with all the, the trees they were losing in the point, they were wondering if they could plant a tree or trees in memory of a family member or a friend and I told them I would check into it.
I think that's a great idea. We, we're working with Revitalize Dunkirk and with the Development Department to do, initiate a tree replacement program. It's unfortunate that we had the invasive Emerald Ash Borer take and destroy all of our beautiful white ash trees. For people that don't know, that's the, that's what makes professional baseball bats, that's a, it's a beautiful wood, we're gonna losing it. So, uh, we, and it, most of those trees that were really along the entrance to the Point were the white ash and they're all dead because of invasive species. So yeah, it, it, I think, maybe we couple that with the memorial bench program, make it a memorial tree program. I know a lot of communities do that, it's a good idea. First I've heard, I heard of that particular type of approach, I want to talk over, over with the mayor, the development director, and move in that direction, great idea.
Yeah, these people were wondering if, if it would be illegal or who's got, can they plant them or does our guys got to plant them?
We'd like to work with them to show them where because the mayor would like us to put more pavilions over at Point Grashit, it's such a popular park, it's a gem, it's really fantastic and, uh, just don't want to plant a tree there and then take it down and put a pavilion there. So if we know where everything's going to go and follow a master plan, it would work well. So I think we can integrate, uh, these people's ideas for memorials and with the, and also get the trees replaced, excellent idea all the way around.
So they can, who, who would they, who would they say?
If they call Public Works, we can, we can be the point person for that.
Okay, thank you.
Except for me. Okay, Councilwoman Nichols?
Uh, just to take off, on a spinoff of, um, what Jim said, uh, they can check with, you and I'm sure Mary and Steve Reese have given you the list of trees that are more disease resilient than, uh, what we have now and they would be able, if they're looking at purchasing a tree, work with them and getting a list from them, them of what trees that they would highly recommend that would be native to the area and withstand invasion of some deadly bug or fungus or whatever. That was what, um, I know Mary has quite a good list and if they did some planting at the point, the entrance of the point last fall, am I not correct, Randy?
Yes, they did, it's continuing. And not only do you want to make it disease resistant, you want to make it deer resistant, if the deer eat all the leaves off the sapling, then we're going to lose the tree. So it, Mary's developed that list, we, we're working, we have a good relationship with the biology department at the college, uh, we'll get, we'll work on their list too. Believe me, if we, if we replanted some invasive species, we'd hear about it, we'd be kicking ourselves, we'd, everybody, you know, we have to deal with what we inherited and we're trying to do the best we can with that.
And the topic on the drainage, um, I've had several phone calls from residents up on Tenney Street and it is really pretty bad, I took a ride before I came to the meeting, it is, they do have a severe drainage problem up there and it's been in the works of, um, coming to some kind of a receiver issue and getting those people taken care of. And for the past three, four years, we've been dealing with the people from Ounce and Otter and a couple, um, a gentleman and a lady from Ounce and Otter did call me on that today and she was trying to be funny and I don't know if she was indeed funny or dead serious on it, but she said she's, the, the amount of water in her front yard, she's half expecting to see otters, um, swimming upstream trying to get to the lake from, uh, how much water is there. She just, she's tired of that not happening before she is no longer, uh, able to live in her house. She just, is there a timeframe because she's been put off? She just, is there a timeframe, because she's been put off year after year after year, the same as with the people up on Tenney Street. I don't know what else to tell them and when it can happen. That's why at the last meeting, we have so many receiver issues and drainage problems, and I asked Mr. DeJoy if he could possibly look into a grant. I know we did receive an email recently, and I forwarded it to you, Randy, on how to go about getting some extra infrastructure help for our small municipalities. I don't know where it can go from there, but I mean, I just, I don't know what to tell them. I don't want to tell them to give them your number, but I said it's early in the season, our plants don't really open up. I don't know if we have the manpower particularly for our guys to, to keep envisaging that, because we have other issues, as you all know, with water main breaks, of what gets put on hold and what gets taken care of first. So we hate to start digging up on Tenney, Ounce, or Otter with receivers, and then we have a major water main break that we've got to tend to. Can you give me some highlights on that?
All good, all good observations. We want to make sure we have a plan that's going to work first, and Ounce and Otter is taken, we've mapped that, we know the topography, we know where we're, we're going to take the water. On Tenney Street, you've asked me to go take a look at that today. I will do that right after the meeting.
Thank you.
It's nice to look at it while it's wet. It tells you where it puddles, and, but it still doesn't tell me where to take it. So we, like we did at Ounce and Otter, we worked at the lower end first, because that's going to be where it goes. And we want to make sure that we use the best management practices. If we don't take the water directly to the lake, we put it through some kind of filtration system, so we, our beaches stay clean. So it's, it's, it's not a real simple solution. Now, drainage is an elephant. How do you eat an elephant one bite at a time? The elephant used to be alive. We've taken a lot of bites off that elephant over the years, and so you can still see the elephant, but we're going to keep biting at it, and we'll get it trued up, and, and I'll take a look at Tenney right after this, and we'll, we'll take care of all of them.
Okay. And I know Mike had mentioned that a pallet full of light fixtures were delivered for the lighting down at the pier. Has that been installed yet?
It hasn't been installed yet, but it's, we'd like to commend Mike Brishen and Dennis, our electrician, for working with the manufacturer. Hubble Manufacturing is, they're the Cadillac of lights, and they stood by their product. They had one that leaked a little bit, and water got in those LED lights, and, and they're gradually burning out. There are still many that are still lit, but they replaced that with a better design. We got all free fixtures. We have to put them up. I thought it was a good, good relationship with the manufacturer to do that. So that, I know people have noticed that they're going out. Once we put the new ones up, I believe that they're going to last a good long time.
And they're more watertight?
Much more watertight, yes.
Thank you. That was the issue. I'd like to take, thank the mayor and Chief Ordolano for a long-awaited signage on Forest Street for our veterans and our disabled American veterans. Thank you both. Many veterans have utilized it, and they are very pleased with it. Thank you again for, for allowing that to happen for the city. It's been a long time coming, and they are very proud, pleased that it is. And our DPW did make the sign, they created it, so it's, it's an original for the city of Dunkirk. And as the mayor just stated about the structure for the farmer's market, that it would be at the location of the current, where they have it currently, and they would have more protection instead of doing their little pop-ups that they do, so that it would be on the form of what was on Third Street before that one was taken down. I don't think Mr. DeJoy knows which one I was talking about. It's where the medical building went, and they had the frame, the roof structure there, and the vendors could be underneath that and stay protected. But I don't know, is there, I know it was news, because it hit the paper today, if there's any speculation of it would be completed for this year's season, do you think, Mr. DeJoy?
That's, that's our goal.
Okay. But that was a very nice surprise to read it in Dunkirk, that we were chosen to receive part of that large amount of money. That's it for me.
Thank you. Okay, one quick update. Randy, could you, we've been talking about this a while. If you could just give a quick update on the replacement streetlights that were damaged in the past couple storms?
Sure.
I know last meeting you gave an update that you were, and you guys were in progress of starting to, to really go after them. Could you just tell us where things are at at this point?
Sure. Okay, I think everybody in Dunkirk would agree that there's a new normal on storm intensity. December 11, 2021 was the second of those storms, the first one being October 31 of 2019 that took our wall apart, and we rebuilt that. The 2021, December 11 storm knocked down many poles on, on Central Avenue. It caused the, our department, Police Department, and DPW to work together to keep that safe. Unfortunately, the, the, we had, because of COVID, there's been a supply line delay in getting arms for those to replace them, so we had a welder, KenSec, is a fantastic fabricator, make some. They look great. Their schedule will be put up. The ones on Central Avenue require two trucks by Becca Electric to put up, and they, they put up all the ones that required one truck. They're going to do a two-truck blitz on those. They plan to do it next week, and get all the poles up and relit on Central Avenue by the fairgrounds, and the one that needs two trucks over on Warsaw Street, North Warsaw Street's going to be replaced as well. They got quite a few up, but there's still some to go. And additionally, we have, there's still a little bit of the LED project that's going on, if they see electricians working on the lights, and the mayor's closing out that project. Really, we're, we're recognizing $300,000 at least savings per year, and these are all tied together. So new normal, we're going to have to replace lights from time to time when the storms knock them down. We're ready to do that now more than we were before.
Thank you. I appreciate the hard work. That's all I have. Let's move on to unfinished business.
We have none, sir.
Thank you. Let's go prefiled resolutions.
Number 16, resolution authorizing adopted garden programs.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Luskovjak?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarz D'Amico?
Aye.
Carried.
Number 17, resolution for water distribution, emergency valve repair and replacement.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, I would just like Randy to see if he would give an explanation, as he did in the workshop, of what the necessity of this is.
Sure. Real quick, I did cover that in the workshop, but the, there were some water line issues in the neighborhood of Washington Park.